And thanks to our sponsor, Pete Sox from Sokum Productions, paying for those costs. Today, we have the opportunity to speak with State Representative Dan Mau of the 91st Legislative District of the PA House of Representatives, and Senator Doug Mastriano from the 33rd Senatorial District of the PA Senate. So, a little bit about the format, we'll start with some introductions from both gentlemen, then we will go into a series of questions based on legislation on police, schools, fire, EMS, and municipal law. And then, both legislators will have an opportunity for some closing comments, maybe some additional things that they're working on. So with that, I will turn it over to Senator Mastriano for his introduction.
Good morning. Our fire and EMS first responders. The way I run my committee here is we try to be the most proactive and active and productive committee in the Senate, and we've achieved that aside from appropriations, the other's committees that constantly run bills. I'm going to hit some highlights here, I don't want to bore you. So, the beauty is, we were able to get something signed into law. This one bill here, for the first time in our Commonwealth's history, that the Senate confirmed a state fire commissioner. That was a new bill signed into law last year, so Tom Cook now answers to both the legislature and the people via us. Before, it was merely an appointment from the governor, that's significant, we have accountability and oversight, we've exercised that a few times with Tom Cook. On the EMS front, we've been tackling the overdose epidemic head-on. Act 18 of 2025 ensures that overdoses treated by EMS are now tracked in real-time reporting statewide. That was one of my bills. When I watched a spike of incidents in our Senate district here, I come to find out that there was no centralized... There is reporting, but it wasn't being tracked. And as an intelligence officer in the Army, we tracked everything, so we could respond to any threats or what have you. So now, if there's a spike in overdoses reported by fire and EMS, we could surge assets to the area and help people in need, so we'd lose less people. We're losing about 3,500 a year in Pennsylvania from overdoses. It's an epidemic. And so, this is one way to try to help people when they're, you know, at their lowest point. My colleague's bill out of York County, Kristen Phillips Hill, was signed into law, Act 34 of 2025, allows EMS providers to leave naloxone and other life-saving treatments behind. Because what happens is EMS goes, resuscitates somebody, they leave, and within a few more hours, that same person is dying again from another overdose. And so, we are seeing a minor improvement in the life-saving with those two bills, with both tracking where... I hate to call it bad doses, because they're all bad, but particularly lethal doses of fentanyl in particular, arriving, you know, either in Chambersburg or Gettysburg, we can track that now, and surge assets to the area for a better response. As far as emergency management, so EMS, fire, I hit that, now let's hit emergency management. We learned quite a bit from the disasters in western Pennsylvania with Norfolk Southern. I've been out there three times, held two hearings out there, and held a third hearing, including a subpoena for the CEO, Mr. Shaw of Norfolk Southern, and he came with his team of lawyers, not making it up, had like five or six attorneys sitting with him at the bench, it was kind of weird. He promised to make it right to the people in western PA, and he hasn't done that yet in my book. But also, we learned quite a bit from the Pittsburgh Bridge collapse. Thank God, what a miracle, no one was on that bridge during rush hour, oh my goodness, on that winter day. And of course, Tropical Storm Debbie, I just held a hearing in north-central Pennsylvania. There's still several bridges out after a year-plus now. In my response to Pima, who came, of course, they had to attend my hearing, I'm like, how could you build in record time a six-span bridge in Philadelphia, but can't fix two small bridges in rural Pennsylvania? And I told him, my view was, it's the wrong voting block, you're appeasing to the people that support your governor, but out west, it's a different set of rules. And they promised they'd get on top of that. I'm in Missouri State right now, show me, prove it to me. You know, we should not look at people's voting records, we should just be helping the people as elected officials. And I'm sick and tired of politicians bringing their politics into responding to crises. As a soldier in the Army, we never cared what your voting record was or your registration, it should not apply in an emergency as well. It's a problem. Closer to home, we were proud to see the reaction and the ability of our firefighters in the Micho State Forest fires, you know, it was a couple miles from my house, it makes it real, right? And when you watch it on TV and it's far away, it's kind of like, that's really messed up. But when you can see the fire and smoke from your house, it changes everything. And I'm just so thankful that the response was absolutely superb from across the region. And obviously, the fire companies that responded, they need compensation, they need, you know, money for the gas used and resources used and equipment that maybe was fouled up, and it's just not forthcoming. And watching our firefighters, who, most of whom are volunteers staying on the streets, asking for donations with cups, is just sickening to me, that that needs to be addressed. If you have any solutions, let me know. As Chair of the Committee, I'd be happy to introduce legislation. As far as looking forward, we're working on a big debatable issue here, sustainable funding for the next-generation 911 system. And we've had some problems, we had an outage a couple months ago, remember that? How catastrophic that was, potentially? That can't happen again. Here's the bottom line, strong municipalities make for a stronger Commonwealth, whether it's supporting your fire and EMS providers, ensuring your 911 systems are up and reliable. And by the way, we did raise the level of funding for the 9/11 services. I only... I have oversight of that, together with my counterpart in the House, Representative Solomon. That was a stopgap. We have a report coming in, it has come in this summer, recommending what the baseline should be statewide to make it sustainable. And I'd be interested in hearing from you folks here that deal with the 911 system, to see how, what you're looking at. Sir?
Very good, thank you, sir. Mr. Mau.
Well, good morning, everyone. I don't see any unfamiliar faces in the room, so there's no point in me introducing myself, everyone knows who I am. Been here a long time. Before I get started, I do want to make mention of the fact that you'll notice that my colleague, Toren Eckert, is not here today. He was actually very good friends with one of those fallen officers in York County, and he is at that funeral this morning and in the procession, so I definitely give him a pass on missing this today. So, you know, just to expound on that a little bit, boy, what a crazy time we're living in, and how do you protect, how do you protect our officers against an ambush like that, when they never see it coming? You know, we just have to do better, and I think we have to recognize the mental aspects of some people that are willing to take other innocent lives, you know, for no good cause. They were simply there to pick up a gentleman on a warrant. He'd have been fingerprinted and probably out of the system within a few hours, waiting to go to a trial in front of a judge. And he decided to take lives. I think, from what I heard, it wasn't the officers he was actually laying in wait for, they just happened to be the first ones to show up. He was actually there for the family. But, that being said, somehow, we got to figure out the mental aspect of violence. You know, I think the media can play a large part in that, too, they could... We've been hearing that people should tone it down, yeah, they should. Whoever, whatever side it's on, the hate needs to stop. That being said, that was my piece on that. I wish Toren well today, it's going to be a real rough day for him. In the House, I'm the Chairman of Agriculture, on the Republican side. The one really, really nice thing about being Chairman of the Agriculture Committee is, we get along, Republicans and Democrats, there's very, very, very little arguing between the two. The Chairman and I are really close friends. There isn't much I wouldn't do for him, there isn't much he wouldn't do for me. We get along. We like to work things out in our respective offices with each other, prior to actually going to vote on a bill, so that we know what the votes are going to be, we know if something needs to be corrected or amended. We'll go over amendments that might be being introduced, some of them good, some of them bad. And we've already been in agreement with one of his members on the Democrat side, that we felt very strongly, the amendment needed more work, and the bill needed more work, and we went through his chairman and said, "Look, we can get this done, but we need to make these changes." And rather than running it, he went against his leadership, which I give him a lot of credit for, and said, "Okay, we'll put this on the back burner, we'll get the fixes in, and we'll run it at the next meeting," which we did, and it went right out, and then he got unanimous vote on it. That's the way it's supposed to work. And thank God, I was lucky enough, and I grew up on farms, so I know my way around agriculture, and it affects every single person in this room, because we all like to eat. Some of us a little more than others, but, you know, we depend on agriculture, it's our number-one industry in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Tourism is number-two. But without agriculture, Pennsylvania doesn't exist, and we need it, and I'm just proud to be the Chairman of that committee. That being said, there's lots and lots of issues, not just under agriculture, but because I'm Chairman of Agriculture, I don't get myself immersed in other committees. I don't see their bills usually until they're headed toward the House floor for a vote, then I go over them. We've got our own things, and that's just, again, the kind of the way it works. I can't possibly know everything in every bill, because there will be about 3,000 of them introduced every session. It's impossible to know everything about every bill. So, I pick and choose where I want to have my fights. But as a legislator, and what I've found over the past few sessions, is, once you're there a while, you start building clout within the agencies, okay? And I find myself getting asked, even out of my district, to go to battle against different agencies that are causing consternation within a township or a borough. And believe me, there are plenty of them. We have a township in Adams County right now, that Pendot is just running through the wringer, for no reason whatsoever. And I'm to the point where, I don't want to step on toes of my colleagues, but I'm ready to make a call and just rip somebody a new one. You know, and my advice to the township is, let the job sit and tell Pendot, it's all yours. You want to hold this up, you finish the job. You get those lights up. And if there's an accident, it's on you, not us, because we did all the right things, and they have the paperwork to back it up. It's just Pendot dragging their feet. The EP is another one. And when they drag their feet, I get to call Dan. This has been month after month after month, and all we're trying to do is this little project here in the township, or in the borough, what in the world's going on? So when I make the call, and I say, "Hey, you either help me, or my next call is to your boss," I'm calling the Secretary directly. And if the Secretary doesn't give me a good response, I just happen to serve with Josh Shapiro for several years on the House floor, and I might even still have his cell number in my phone. We're pretty good friends. Democrat, Republican, we don't agree on all the issues, especially the budget that his Budget Secretary's putting forward, but, you know, he's a decent guy, and he'll work with you, and he'll listen to you. And I asked for a meeting just on an issue in Franklin County, that's real close to my heart, and I asked for a meeting, and about two weeks later, I had a sit-down with the Governor. He wanted to hear what it was all about, and I'm still waiting for him to get back to me with a yes or no on it. But that's the way it works, but it takes a lot of time in the legislature to get to that point. And when you get to that point, people find out, they start calling you. MedEd's another one that I have to deal with. Sometimes, they can cause a lot of issues for, you know, the township wants a certain piece developed, and there's not enough electricity, well, guess what? You got to put up a million dollars to get the three-phase electric from there to here. Well, who's selling the electric? You know, if a store wants to come into your area, the Walmart doesn't say, "Well, township has to pay for our store." You're going to make the money selling the product, you should pay for your own store. You know, why would it be that the township or the borough has to pay MedEd to bring more juice to them, when that's what they do for a living? That's the kind of fights that I get in, and to tell you truth, I salivate the mouth to do it.
And I want to take two years to do it.
Exactly right. Until someone like myself really starts barking and raising cane, then things start to happen. You know, and I can't tell you how many times I've had people come to me and say, "Boy, they've done this for so long to me, what can I do?" Well, if you'd have come to me six months ago, you'd have had it by now, you'd have had it long ago, in most cases. And that's what makes this job worthwhile. That's what, again, like I say, I salivate for doing this. I'm somebody that likes to lock horns and... I come out bloody at times, but I'm in the fight. So, you know, and I've always fought for the little guy. And townships and boroughs and schools are the little guys. The big guys are the people up there in those big concrete buildings that we call bureaucrats. They're the big guys, they have a lot of power, and have never been elected to office. It kind of rubs me the wrong way, so I don't mind getting in battles with them. But I take on issues, and some of these we'll probably go over today. You know, because I own a small mobile home community as one of my businesses, a friend of mine, who is a Democrat, came to me, she's writing a mobile home bill, came to me for advice on how to write, because she doesn't own one, but she sees the same problem that we have, and maybe we'll get into that, so I won't take the time to explain now. But, you know, cashing schools is another bill that we should talk about, okay? You know, our budget, I'm sure somebody's going to ask about that. That one's short and sweet. Penn State closing seven campuses, there's a big fight. There is a big fight. And boy, did they ever just stick their toe in it recently, with what they did with the President, after they announced closing seven campuses. That one irks me, and we might get into that as well, I don't want to spoil it, you know, but in any event, you understand a little bit about what I do in my office, and I will be the first one to tell you, I've said this since day one, I'm only as good as the staff, like, we have one sitting back here now, Chris is almost always with me, my staff is top-notch. They make me look good. I think I look good, do I look good? I'm skinnier, but, in any event, you know, you're only as good as the staff you have behind you. So I always want to make sure I compliment them, because they do a wonderful job for me. That being said, let's move on.
Very good, appreciate it. I think Senator Mastriano had something else he wanted to add.
Yeah, I did talk about veterans, obviously near and dear to my heart, and we probably passed out of my committee this past session about 40 or 50 bills, and several of those were signed into law. One of them, I was surprised by the effect, speaking with your Veterans Support Office here in town, Stan Clark. So I introduced Senate Bill 126, working with Stan Clark and others, and most of the good ideas come from the people, obviously. In fact, Dan, I think all the good ideas come from the people. Stan grabbed me, and there was a problem. If you're a veteran and you're qualified for some state benefits, the benefits you receive at the federal level and all income is counted against you, Senate Bill 126, Act 27 of 2024, excludes all those disabled payments. And I thought it would have a significant impact, I didn't realize that it doubled the amount of availability to veterans who are now qualified to receive state benefits when their federal benefits were subtracted out. So I'm really proud of that bill that we got signed into law. Another one was codifying it to law, another one of my bills, Senate Bill 447, it's Act 70, that was recently signed into law, it's called Pennsylvania Vet Connect. Have you used it? I see you nodding your head there, it's a good website, though. I used it, it's a one-stop shop in Pennsylvania to see if you or your family members are qualified for state benefits. And it's really, two clicks, and I'm done, right? And it's of that quality. So now, a lot more veterans and their family members are easily finding that they're qualified for certain benefits for their service. And the last one, it might seem symbolic to some, but I think most of us appreciate here, we do have some Vietnam-era veterans, can I see the hands of anyone that served between 1959 and 1975, 59 to 75? I know you were in, are you the only one? If you gave it up for our brother there, thank you for service, man. Mr. Mayor, my dad was in the Navy during that time, Mr. Mayor, and I was appalled that one day, he stopped coming home from the Navy base in uniform, and I asked him, I was a little kid, I liked seeing my dad in his sailor uniform, "Dad, where's your uniform?" And he said, "The base commander ordered all the sailors to go in civilian clothes and leave base." And I was like, "Why?" And he's like, "Well, you might get beat up by somebody or attacked." And that was the '60s, the '70s. And so, it's interesting, because in Pennsylvania, when I was elected, we had a Desert Storm Day, which I was a veteran of, we have an Operation Enduring Freedom commemoration, which I was part of, Operation Iraqi Freedom, World War II, but we skipped Vietnam. And one of the Vietnam veterans at the War Council came up to my staff and said, "Where's our day?" And so, I'm proud to say that this past March 29th, for the first time, Pennsylvania has recognized and thanked our Vietnam veteran-era soldiers. Formally, at long last, we had Lieutenant Cleve McCleary up to speak, he's a famous Marine Silver Star recipient, 1969, his position was overrun by Viet Cong. One of his soldiers, Private Johnson, jumped on a grenade, saved a lot of lives, he lost his life, though, received Medal of Honor. Cleve was fighting off hand-to-hand a bunch of Viet Cong, and they threw a grenade at him, he instinctively put his hand up, the grenade went off, protecting this eye, lost this eye, lost an arm, mangled his arm, lost a leg, and the guy is a true American hero here, so he represented your generation. So that's just a few things we've done here. Now we're working on recognizing the Korean War, that was also skipped, the forgotten war. And so, you know, we're doing substantial things, more benefits for our veterans, but at the same time, also recognizing people's service that have been overlooked historically. There's so much more, but I think the questions are more important now. Thank you, Scotty.
Appreciate you, appreciate you, thank you. Just a quick shout-out, while we're on veterans, my brother Shannon Bolton, today's his birthday, so happy birthday, Shannon. He's a two-time veteran, he did his service, got out, went back in into the US Army, so thank you for that. Dan, your comments on Pendot, I identify with that, my borough in York, we have the 83 Project coming through, we've got some disagreements on some cost runs over there, so that's definitely an issue, and hopefully we'll find that resolution. So the format here, we'll have about a half an hour, and what we are looking to do is cover five different areas, which are representative of our membership, that is, police, schools, fire, EMS, and municipal law. So we'll start with police, and what I'll do is introduce a few pieces of legislation that was passed in the previous session, and then give our legislators an opportunity to talk about those areas, and any efforts they're looking for in this session. So with police, we looked at four different acts last year, Act 10 of 2023, Police Officer Applicant Fingerprinting Authority, Act 37 of 23, which was House Bill 863, lowering fitness standards for police officers, Act 18 of 24, cellphone driving ban, and Act 49 of 24, municipal police pension buybacks. So we'll start with the Senator, any comments on police legislation?
Yeah, obviously, there was trouble with that one House bill lowering physical standards. I get it, in the Army, only about 15% of the population is in a physical condition without a criminal record to enter the United States Army, we're a volunteer force, so we've been dealing with this recruitment thing just as long, or even longer than the local police force has. But when you lower the physical standards here, you do enter it, within reason. I mean, if the standards are too high, I get it, but, you know, for the Army, the basic standards aren't really that hard, and that's, you know, most Americans, we have to lose a few pounds to make weight standards, but, okay, that's doable. But lowering the standards generally to enter the police force, I think puts our officers at risk in their ability to respond. And I get it, it's recruitment issue, I just, there's got to be a better way. And I think one way to deal with that is better pay. Some of our departments in my district here are lowballed, they go across the border to Maryland and get far better benefits and pay, especially with our 911, in Franklin County, for instance, a lot of our people just drive down to Maryland to get paid considerably more, just drive an hour to Frederick, and they're doing it far better than they are staying within Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mau?
As far as the pension buyback, that was presented to me by, actually, a couple police officers from Cumberland come out and had lunch with me one day, and we talked about it. I said, "Well, the township or borough that you would be transferring to is going to wind up costing them a lot of money." So if they can write a bill that you can, that all the money transfers, and that you can buy it into the next township or borough that you're going to work for, then, as long as it's a net-zero increase in costs, other than what they're putting in, if they want to hire you, I have no problem with the bill doing that. What I have a problem with is for us to say, "You must pick up their costs from the last police department." If that all transfers to the new one, and they accept that, they would have to accept those agreements that are in the bill, then I'm fine with it. But I don't want any additional costs being put onto our townships and boroughs, if they want to hire another police officer that worked for another township or borough. If everything can transfer over, and it's no additional cost, I'm fine. If that township or borough wants to accept that, I'm okay with it. That part I'm okay. The rest of it, I think Doug pretty much handled, he didn't get into the radar, but that's all right.
The perennial bill.
Yes, they're around forever.
And we will say that police radar is something that is on the radar for the Mayor's Association, so I know it's something that Mayor Harris is very passionate about as well. The second topic, we'll go into schools, and we'll lump this into education, so that we can include the state schools conversation as well. Last session, we had Act 19 of 2023, which was Senate Bill 851, which was the school bus cameras, and that gave automated enforcement of bus-side stop signs. So basically, if you go past a bus now, they have cameras on the system that will take the picture, and then a third party sends you your fine. If you don't pay that fine, then you go to court, just like you would anywhere else. We'll take this to the Senator first, any discussion on school bills?
Yes, thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
So, we, one of my, so, Dan and I get a list of bills, and then there's priorities for us, and the priorities are usually pushed down out of the constituents. With a 400% increase of antisemitism in the United States and Western Europe here, I've introduced Senate Bill 127, it's the Holocaust Education Bill. Now, 2014, a Holocaust bill did pass, I'm working with the creators of that bill, it was compromised and watered down so much that there's no regulation, so basically, you can fulfill the Holocaust education requirement in a school, if somebody watches a movie, maybe on Anne Frank, or the Tin Boones, what have you, you know, their experiences, but I want something more regimented, where actually, the Holocaust is just taught, because we don't want to have a repeat of that. I was speaking with actually one of the creators of the original Holocaust bill in 2014 last night, I was texting her, not talking, I was texting her, and I asked, "What can we do?" Because we're talking about this bill, and how do we get the leadership to move it? It's sitting right now, it passed Education Committee, six to five, along party lines, I don't know why, but I want it moved out of the Senate. And so basically, it will mandate specific education requirements for the Holocaust. When I was first stationed in Germany during the Cold War, it was in 1980s in Nuremberg, our barracks were the old grounds that Hitler used for his parades, Merrill Barracks, we named it after a Medal of Honor recipient that helped liberate Europe from the Nazis. And visiting Dachau, and what's left of Bergen-Belsen, and studying up there, and living amongst the people that were still alive in that generation that enabled that, there I actually had some nightmares, I was talking actually to the same sponsor of the bill, said, "It's strange, I'm a Gentile, I had nightmares about the Holocaust." And she goes, "She believes that if we don't get this right, there's going to be a repeat of that." And she's right, sadly. And so, that's my priority. Another priority is called Johnny's bill, many of you might know the Thomasello's family, Johnny went to school nearby here, not too far, and he was bullied, and there was a lot of lapses in how the school responded, and he took his own life. It should never have happened. So Johnny's Law is an anti-bullying law that I have in place, that I think will prevent a repeat of what happened to the Thomasello family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mau?
As far as the cameras on the school buses, I'm a mixed bag on that, because I've seen firsthand how cameras can be wrong. There's sometimes different incidences, sometimes the car's already going past, and out comes a sign, "You're halfway past," well, now it's going to take a picture, and you're already halfway past. You know, I just got a speeding ticket out in the country for doing 39, whole 39 miles an hour down in Maryland, and I'm out in the country, but it just happened to be a 25 mile an hour zone, and you're right, it was a third-party vendor that sent me the ticket. For going a whopping 39 miles an hour in a 25 zone, and they're in the house within a half a mile of me, out in the country, a big two-lane road. Wow, we'd all get tickets, wouldn't we? So I'm not a big fan of cameras, whether it's a red light camera, or, you know, camera inside the bus, making sure the students behave, I'm a big fan of that. But to give you a fine, especially with a third-party vendor... But to give you a fine, especially with a third-party vendor, boy, I really, really, really have to think that one through, because they can be as wrong as they can be right. So, you know, I'm not a big fan of that. But as far as, you know, the education part of it that we're talking about, and this is actually an education and EMS bill that I wrote many years ago, not too long after I was in office, and, you know, there's absolutely no reason why anybody, even the schools, should be against this. No reason whatsoever, but I do get pushback, and because, and the pushback, and I'll be very honest, came from the teachers' union, and I could never get it done. I gave up on it for a long time, and now that, now that we're seeing that education needs to change, and we need to concentrate a little more on VOTEC than we need to do concentrating on French and Spanish and trigonometry, we need to develop skills, I thought I'd rewrite this bill, that, and what it does, it's House Bill 1861, and it's in the Education Committee, but it involves EMS as well. And what it says basically is that if you join a fire company as a, I believe sophomore, junior, senior, okay? And I think there's an age limit, I'm not real sure, but in any event, you join a fire company and become a junior firefighter, okay? You have to be a member of a fire company. And you start taking classes towards your firefighter and EMS. As you get certificated, those certificates would count towards your credits for graduation, just like any other elective. And the caveat is, you have to supply your own transportation, your family, school's not responsible for it. And the cost would be borne by either your family or your fire company. Again, the schools would not be responsible for the cost of you taking those classes. So it's no cost to the school, but the credits would then count towards your graduation. Simple bill, and we need volunteer firefighters. So if you get a lot of this stuff behind you before you even graduate, it's like do-enrollment, okay? But it's for the fire service and EMS. And I always thought it was a great, great bill. Why there was ever pushback on it, I don't know. But this year, with everybody looking towards, you know, VOTEC education, and here in Adams County, hopefully we take a step towards VOTEC education soon, I thought it would just be a slam dunk this time, but it's sitting in the Education Committee, I don't know if it will get moved out or not. But at the time, years ago, when I first wrote this, the pushback came from the teachers' union, and I can't understand why. I guess they wanted to keep the kids in their classroom, your guess is as good as mine. But I think it's a great bill, I think it's one that should see the governor's pen, but there it sits. And I have zero clout in the Education Committee, but that's why I'm with that.
Very good, thank you. You would think that something like that could be incorporated easily into like ECTI or York Tech.
Should be.
In collaboration with the county emergency services.
But, just so you know, since you mentioned York Tech, you opened the door. And I did say there's a big push for VOTEC education, I just had a meeting down there a few months ago, and one of my questions was, do you have a waiting list to get in here? And they said, since the day we opened the door, there's been a 350-student waiting list to get into this school. So every year, there's 350 students that don't have an opportunity to get into that school to learn a skill. And that you will find at every VOTEC institution in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Every one. So, little caveat, I'm a big VOTEC guy, if you haven't noticed by now.
So in that vein, we're gonna be holding a Senate hearing at our Career Tech in Chambersburg to draw attention to the benefits of it.
Good.
I mean, we need a little bit of help in Adams County in something comparable.
Adams County is one of the few counties in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that does not offer its own VOTEC. We have, Viscount of Waga Valley has a nice little VOTEC there, but every school should have the ability, whether it's a standalone, or whether they build their own, and then you have school choice, so if this school offers, you know, a skill that you want to learn, you could go to that school. If your school doesn't offer it, I think that's how it could all work very well together.
I agree. And I'm the Vice Chair of the Education Committee in the Senate. Dan, if you want to copy Catburne in the Senate?
There you go, it's all your, you can just copy that rascal and get her done, I'll sign it.
Get her done, all right, thank you.
Perfect. See, we're already making progress here, folks.
That's how it works.
This is how it gets done. All right, our next topic is gonna be fire. I know we had several bills last year, I don't have the numbers in particular, for volunteer tax relief within municipalities. Senator, can you speak to specifically fire? We'll get to EMS shortly.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I had the opportunity this past early summer to go to Fireman Training 100, Firefighter Training 101. It's a course held in Pittsburgh every two years where they take legislators, and they let us go through a day of their experiences. I get it, it just gives us a flavor. One of my brothers has been in the firefighting service for three decades, and now I rode him and said, Richard, I now have a clue of what you went through. The worst was when they put us into a basement, smoke-filled, pitch black, the guy in the front had a light, and that was me, two other legislators behind me. And then I'm crawling, and I hit a tube I have to go through, and the thought through my mind was, I'm too old for this, and how long is this tube? And then you crawl through the tube, and you find a body, and you have to drag it out, that's fun, to get, you go over some kind of incline, I'm like, so people in Pittsburgh's have tubes and inclines in their basement, that's fantastic. But it gave me the appreciation for what they do, the uncertainty of what you're walking into in those situations, and I appreciate that. And the one thing that we're struggling with here is a decline in volunteerism across the state. I understand in the 70s, there was 300 and some thousand volunteer firefighters, now we're down to about 70,000. 300,000 statewide to 70,000 today, with the population growing. Mathematically, that's a catastrophe waiting to happen. And I know we're looking for ways to merge fire companies and have you, that translates to longer wait time, slower response time. And so, one thing that we just had signed a law, we worked hard with Tom Cook, the Fire Commissioner on, was a firefighter one training. It's an 80, it's a 180-hour block of training, broken down into four modules, and basically, you have a full-time job, you have a family, and you have to take these online courses, and also go to courses and buildings like this. And how do you do that? And after going through two years of training, then you have a cumulative exam at the end, and I would not remember what I learned two years ago. And so, speaking with the firefighting community, they said, let's break it down into modules, let us test out of Module 1, next Module 2. And so we, something so easy took, that was my bill, took three years to get signed into law, and that is signed into law now. So that's just, Scotty, that's a small thing, but the people going through the training appreciate it. I know maybe to your ears, like, so what? But if you're going through 180 hours of training, and you can just test out of each module, you can wait and do the whole cumulative exam if you want. I mean, for what, I have four masters, one of my master's programs, it was cumulative oral exam, that was awful to study for, and I could not imagine being a firefighter, two years of training. So that's something practically we did, it's signed into law now, and they have the option. I hope it makes it more user-friendly for people to volunteer and become a firefighter.
And it's common sense.
It's so much so.
It is, very common sense. So thank you for that. Mr. Mal.
And by the way, just Dan.
Understood. All right. Yeah, Mr., makes me sound like I'm 65, well, I am 65 years old.
I'm gonna go in a little bit different direction from what Senator Mastriano went, just because I don't get into that committee too much, I just know that there's a bill out there right now that would, it amends the second-class township code to increase the tax mileage limit for second-class townships from three mils to 10 mils for fire services, and from one-half mil to five mils for ambulance rescue and other emergency services. No, that sounds like I'm a mean guy, but you can already, as township and a borough, assess a fire tax, or a fire fee, emergency services fee. And the reason I say no is, I look at what happened with MS-4, and not that there'd be anybody in this room that would abuse this, I don't want to be accusatory, but I know certain places where they instituted an MS-4, that's the municipal separate storm sewer tax fee that's put on, that's supposed to be used for sedimentation and erosion, so that topsoil or erosion pollution doesn't get into our streams and find its way to the bay, okay? That's what it's supposed to be for. And I've seen boroughs, I know one in particular in York County that has been collecting it for years, and hasn't done one single thing yet that involves MS-4, but they're collecting the tax, because I pay it quite often in that borough. And again, I'm not here to be accusatory, I just would think that there has to be guardrails put on it that would be open to the public before you could do it. But then again, many townships and boroughs already assess a fee, an additional fee, to give to their local community, fire, and EMS companies. I don't think we need to do an increase when they can already do the fee, that could open up some, some bad use of it, abuse of it. I don't want that door to be open after I've witnessed what happened in other places. So that's why I'm very leery on, but that bill is just introduced, it hasn't seen the light of day yet in committee, it hasn't come up for a vote. So I don't think it would do very well, even on the House floor, I'm not sure how it would do in committee, but I don't think it would do well on the House floor in the times that we're in today.
Very good, thank you. Both of you gentlemen have touched on EMS bills, of course, and you covered your emergency management. I do want to move on, for time's sake here, to municipalities. And last session, I have 10 bills of highlight, the fireworks law updates, the municipal borough code amendments, allowing mayors, funding to join mayor's associations, provisions relating to changing numbers of members of council, and authorizing joint trash collection and waste collection authorities. Act 10, second-class township auditor compensation. Act 44, municipal electronic submissions for MPCs, green lights for public works, township supervisor compensation, easing restrictions on ownership of cemeteries, when you have defunct cemeteries, what happens with them, and then other borough code amendments. Good faith defense, elected officials shall not be subject to a surcharge if acting in good faith on written nonconfidential opinions of a solicitor for borough managers. The provision allows for the position to be filled by an individual, a partnership, or another entity, and borough managers can be signed under professional service agreements now, instead of regular employment agreements. And then budget notices must be out at least 30 days before approval. So if your meeting happens 28 days after your advertisement, you have to wait until the next meeting. So I will turn this over to the Senator first on municipal law.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Something not on the list that I'd like to hit, and actually has broad support, even the ACLU's behind me on this here, so I'm like, that's very interesting, so. But it's my bill, Senate Bill 194, which, Senate Bill 194 modernizes Pennsylvania legal advertising laws by authorizing online posting and other types of notices as valid. For record-keeping, the bill is well-written, we've worked with the various news outlets associations, ACLU and you and others, so the goal is to make it more common sense, more modern, so you don't have to advertise in newspapers, but at the same time maintaining and preserving transparency, record-keeping, and opening meeting requirements here. So it did pass out of local government 10 to 1, outstanding bipartisan, and we'll be pushing and working with the House, sorry, Senate leadership, I hate when that happens, to get it moved over to the House. It does have broad support, and there's quite a lot of momentum from local government associations to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
This is easy. Yes on all the above that you mentioned. I think I voted yes on everything that's on the governor's desk. Yeah, there was no votes in there. The one thing that was, that I do want to mention is, especially for zoning hearings, it's getting harder and harder to find people to transcribe these days, so in this day and age, why can't we do things digitally and save the applicant a ton of money, and time, and time for the secretaries, when they can just file it either on a thumb drive, or on a disk, or put it in the cloud? That made a whole lot of sense to me. So, not trying to work against those people that do that for a living, but there's getting to be less and less of them, and they're very expensive, some of them charge a flat fee now of like $500. I heard, whether it takes a half an hour or five hours, it's, there's your fee, if I show up, that's it. Well, it costs like 50 cents to tape, or I say tape it, that shows my age, but to put it digitally.
Right. And a lot of our meetings are going digital now, you know, we still voice record still for transactions, or transcription into our minutes, too. So I will concur with Senator, Senate Bill 194, you know, some of our counties don't have a major newspaper, especially in the northern regions. So they have to advertise in a newspaper that their people aren't even gonna read. So what sense does that make? And, you know, certain papers are getting taken over by national conglomerates, and that's almost tripling the amount of the cost to your smaller municipalities, and there are certain things you have to put in those advertisements. So you can't just shorten and condense it to save money. So we applaud your efforts at the municipal level for that. Thank you.
This makes sense.
So now we will move to some closing comments, and we will start with Senator Mastriano.
Thank you, and I'll keep it brief here, since we are getting close to 9:30. I'm excited about the Beagle Bill. So the Beagle Bill basically ends state experimentation on dogs and cats in our Commonwealth. Come to find out, you would think there's a medical or scientific purpose for there, there's not, we found in my research, that 95% of the experiments have no relevance to people, and so why are we doing this? To see that, you know, what a broken back looks like on a cat, are you kidding me? And so it's a good bill, it passed unanimously out of the Senate a couple months ago. And so, over to the House, and we'll be working. The ASPCA here in the county, they have been fantastic, the people, the ASPCA leadership here in Gettysburg, really were the driving force and the brains behind this bill here. It's a, I co-prime with a Democrat colleague, Senator Comida, so it's a bipartisan bill here, and what we're hoping with that kind of alignment, we can get some effort, movement in the House. The last one is smart meter opt-out, I'm hearing from a lot of constituents not liking the smart meters, and so this bill would basically, if you don't want to have a smart meter, you don't have to have one, simple as that. Thank you.
Very good. Senator, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Dan?
All right. I have till 10 o'clock, is that correct?
Ron, we have till 10, right?
Boy, do I have some stuff for you guys. No, you heard me say that I love to sink my teeth in, and when I do, sometimes I just can't let go, and I really enjoy doing that. Well, there's some issues that some of you might say, well, that's not an issue, I don't care about that, but other people do, and sometimes I do, too. And I'll go over a couple of those with you. First, let me, the budget didn't really come up. I didn't hear anybody say, hey, what about the budget, we really need to get it done? Didn't hear anybody say that. I don't think anybody's even called my office and said, or emailed me and said, we need this budget done. But it was supposed to be done the end of June, okay? And I mean, and I'm, again, I'm not here to bash anybody, but if the governor, who is a friend of mine, were to say, hey, Dan, give me some advice, what would you do? I'd say, the first thing I'd say is I'd fire the Budget Secretary. First thing, you gotta get rid of him. Because he put forward a budget that's 5.2, his first attempt was 5.2 billion dollars more than the IFO says we're gonna have to spend. So where do you make that money up? Well, first of all, you clean out the $3 billion that's in the rainy day fund, and then the second item was, we're gonna legalize recreational marijuana and tax the snot out of it. And the third one, we're gonna tax at 52% skill games and internet gaming, and I don't know how you'd tax internet gaming, but that's where the money was gonna come from. I don't believe in running the Commonwealth on sin taxes. That's the wrong approach. I believe that, you know, if he were asking, I'd say, get a Budget Secretary, and you tell him, you put together a budget that doesn't go over the IFO, not one dime. And then, you can negotiate all the numbers below that, back and forth, and take some from here and put it there, but don't let the bottom line go over what the IFO says. In my opinion, that's irresponsible, and we're gonna wind up like California, who has 18 trillion? 18 trillion dollars or billions of dollars in debt, hundreds of billions of dollars in debt. We don't want that here in Pennsylvania. Besides, we have in our constitution that you have to have a balanced budget. So nobody has been screaming because a few years ago, the Supreme Court in Pennsylvania made a decision that all state employees must be paid, whether we have a budget or not. So our schools in this part of the country aren't complaining yet because they only get about 20% of their total cost to operate the school from the state. The rest of it, the other 80%, they get in August, September, October, when you pay your school tax bills. So they're good till next spring. Okay? So they aren't running out of money yet. Upstate is a whole different ballgame. Okay? Upstate, it's the other way around. They get 80% in some of our rural counties. They get about 80% from the state and 20% local effort. That being said, what's Dan's, what's Dan's part in playing the budget? Okay? What part do I play in the budget? I get a little bit of say, just a little bit of say, in the agriculture lines because I'm ag chairman. Outside of that, I get zero. That's the appropriations committee. They will meet, they will work it over, and they will put something forward. Now, being in a minority, which my caucus is, that really doesn't mean anything for my appropriations. It's the majority. In the House, it's the Democrats. In the Senate, it's the Republicans. Okay? There will be about, and this is going to sound awfully crazy to some of you, there'll be about a dozen people, correct me if I'm wrong here, about a dozen people, leadership in the Senate, appropriations chairs in the Senate, leadership in the House, appropriations chairs in the House, and the governor's people, his budget people will work this out. It's about 12 people, maybe 14, maybe 10, but about 12 people that will decide what the budget is that's going to be voted on. And they will have the votes counted before I ever even get to look at it. I'll see it either the night before it gets voted or the morning of it gets, the day it gets voted, is when I will actually see the budget and I'll go, oh, that's nice. This is what we're going to have, no matter whether I vote yes or no. That being said, part of our budget, I just want you guys to understand how it works. So when people say, what are you doing about the budget? Well, I'm ag chairman. I don't have any say in the budget. That's appropriations of the majority parties. Part of our budget is what we call non-preferred schools. And here's another piece of information a lot of people don't know. Non-preferred schools in Pennsylvania are Pitt, Penn State, Lincoln Temple, and Penn, Penn Vet, okay? Not Penn University subsidiary, Penn Vet, the Vet School, okay? They're called non-preferred. Why? Because they're not Pennsylvania-owned schools. So everybody thinks Penn State is a Pennsylvania state school. It's not part of the state system. We have no ownership in it whatsoever. It is a private school, no different than Gettysburg. Okay? The only difference is we give them money. And it takes not one cargo ship, it takes two to haul the money up Penn State that we give them. Okay? We give them about $350 million a year. And why am, and that's been that way ever since I've been in. And I've voted no on all this funding many times. Now that I'm ag chairman, I can't vote no on Penn State because we would lose our Penn State extension, which is extremely important to our agriculture community here in Adams County. Extremely important. So, but a lot of people can't. But what they just did is so distasteful for me that even I'm going to have a tough time giving them a vote. And I don't know, and it takes, oh, here's a caveat I forgot to tell you. It takes 2/3 of the House and 2/3 of the Senate to get them their money. So if the Republicans don't vote with the Democrats when they run, and these are separate, they're part of the budget but outside the budget. They have to be voted separately. Okay? If we all vote no, they don't get their money. None of those schools get their money. We all wanted to vote no on Pitt a couple of years ago, and we did because Pitt did something pretty nasty and really upset a lot of people, even my Democrat friends, and they weren't going to get their money. But because your leader is from western Pennsylvania, she grouped them all together and ran them as a bunch. So if you vote no on one, you vote no on all of them. Well, we didn't want to vote no on all of them. I personally think we ought to go back to the way we used to do it and vote them one at a time. Okay? Penn State just did something that just really rubs me the wrong way. As you heard earlier, they're closing seven satellite campuses. Mount Alto is one. That's close to our heart here in Adams County because we got students to go there. Okay? It's the only forestry program in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The only one is in Mount Alto. We had a meeting up there not long ago and they came in to say, well, let's work together to try and do something with this. Basically, what it came down to is toward the end of the meeting, I spoke up and said, well, why don't you just change this into a subsidiary, keep your nursing, keep your forestry, and make the rest of it vote tech because there's a waiting list to get into Penn Tech, which you own. So build it and they will come. You can't keep teaching the same thing for the last 50 years and expect people to keep learning. The times have changed. Students have changed. The direction kids want to go have changed. You haven't changed. So you need to, you need to keep this open while the decision's already made. Well, what the hell are you doing here? Why are you here? Is my question. You're here and you pulled this big meeting together, but the decision's already made before you even talked to us. It really irritated a lot of people. And then the other day, this hit the papers. Penn State's president, who I know her very well, Neely Bendapootie's, she's like the Energizer Bunny. She just goes 500 miles an hour all the time. She's a good person, probably a very good president. But the board, the same board that decided to close seven satellite campuses, and by the way, I asked how much Mount Alto was losing, they said about $3 million a year they take a loss. Well, 3 million out of 350 million, I think you can keep it open. We're paying to keep that open. But in any event, they just decided to give her a pay raise of $450,000 a year, which brings her salary to 1.4 million, which her total benefit package is now worth, the entire package raises Bendapootie's total compensation to roughly $2.8 million.
I'm in the wrong business, Dan.
Should we give them $350 million if they can piss your money away like that? I'm sorry, I'm cussing, but when I get irritated, I tend to do that. But, but really? Really, guys? And then you want us to vote to give you $350 million? She's the second highest compensated president, college president in the United States of America. And they're going to say, that's because we're the best. Well, you can argue that out with all the other schools. But that's irritating to me. So that's part of the budget that I will have to vote. And it's going to be very, very difficult for me to vote for those, those schools as a package. I don't know how you feel about it, but I mean, we need Penn State extension. There's no question about it. We need the kids to be able to learn. But what they're doing is, is, is just atrocious, in my opinion. I keep watching the clock. I talked a little bit about, and things, some things do irritate me.
Eight minutes over, brother.
Well, that's all right. This is good. This is good stuff, I want to tell you. And this involves no, probably no one in this room. It might. I don't know. I don't know your personal, where you live or anything, but I only know because I own a mobile home community. And when I see something that wrongs people, especially little guy, I get irritated because little guy's the one I'm elected to protect. I'm not elected to protect the private equity firms. I'm elected to protect the little guy that lives in Adams County. And what's going on in mobile home communities is private equity firms are buying them. And you've got somebody that knows here, I've been offered 50% more for my park than what it's worth. Why? Because they're cash cows. Not that I'm rich or anything, I'm not, but they generate cash. Okay? And this is a great investment. And they're finding out because these people are trapped. You live in a mobile home community, own your house and it sits on my lot. Okay? Now, I'll just tell you, I'm an open book and you can go on the website or on the internet and find this out. I charge $500 a month, which is a fairly, for this area, a very low price. And I include water, sewer, and trash, and I'm on the municipal system. So I am very, very, very reasonable. If I sold my home, my park to a private equity firm, which they are dying to buy, and they've already bought several in Adams County, they're buying them all over the state. Okay? My rent would go from 500 to 900 almost overnight. These people can't pick their home up and move it. First of all, there's no place to move it to. Okay? There's no place to move it to. And do you know the cost of moving a mobile home, especially if it's a double-wide? Know what it costs to split that thing apart? Paper it in or plastic it in and move it and put it back together somewhere else? Those people don't have that kind of money. Minimum 20 grand. Those people live in mobile home communities because that's what they can afford. And these private equity firms are raping them, financially raping them. So Liz Hambridge, who is a Democrat, found out that I own a park, small park, very small, came to me and said, I want to write a bill to try and stop this. And I said, I want to help you. Now, I don't believe in rent control. That's something New York City does. However, we are trying to write something, especially to send a shot across the bow, if you will, to say, you must stop this, although a lot of damage has already been done. So I stood on the House floor and I explained what's going on because I'm probably the only one in the legislature that owns one of these things. So I know it firsthand. And when I, my caucus was dead against it at first because it's rent control. We don't tell people what they can charge. Well, guess what? Most of my caucus, after my little speech and explained this, which they didn't know, I carried most of my caucus along with all the Democrats. And I got a lot of kudos from a lot of people on both sides of the aisle for standing up for what's right. And that's what we're supposed to do as elected officials, is stand up for that little guy. These people that run these private equity firms, I call them white shirts. They sit in their big ivory towers in New York, Chicago, LA, wherever, they look at spreadsheets, they look at numbers. They don't look at the faces of these people they're hurting that are living on fixed income. I do. And that's why I'm not selling to them. That's not a pat on my back. It's just, I wasn't raised to get rich off of somebody else's misery. That's not the way we should be. And I do what I do to protect. There's one other little issue I got, and this, again, probably doesn't mean anything to anybody, but you'll understand it in a second. I'm starting a big fight and maybe a lawsuit against the PIAA. Okay? The Athletic Association of Pennsylvania. A lot of people say, what in the world can you possibly have against these guys? Okay? First of all, just the other night at York Suburban, and I follow high school sports a lot. And I like to follow my, my home team, which I went to New Oxford, same as Al. And I stopped in at York Suburban to go to a football game. And I knew what was going to happen. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make it happen again so that I could have her tell me no. And I get to the booth where you would normally take your $5 or $6 to pay to get in. I'm sorry, we don't take cash, we're a cashless campus. You've got to have a credit card or a bank card to get in. Hmm. Well, I don't like that. It's $5 or $6 and you want me to put it on a credit card? And a lot of people are like, well, what's the big deal? Pull out a credit card. Well, what if one of these H2A workers from Adams County has a kid going to school and doesn't even have a bank account and doesn't have a credit card? But he has cash because he gets paid and he goes to the bank and he cashes his check and he goes about his business. And he wants to go see his kid play and he can't get into the game. You just disenfranchise somebody because they don't have money, because they don't have credit. So I went up and I said, I'd like to pay cash. He says, I'm sorry, it's credit card only. Oh, well, okay. My question to you then is, if I didn't have a credit card or a bank card with me, would you deny me entrance? Yes, I have to. That's the rule. That's policy. I said, well, who enforces that policy? Well, it's, now, I think she was wrong on this, but she pointed to the athletic director who was standing right down by the fence. So I paid and went in and I went and asked him the exact same question. If I didn't have a credit card with me, and I'm a taxpaying citizen in Pennsylvania, would you deny me entrance to the game? Well, it depends on the situation. Situation is, sir, I've got a pocketful of money, I don't have a credit card or a bank card. You're going to deny me the right to get into a public event. Now, take it one step further. Your school gets into the playoffs, the PIAA playoffs. Okay? Your credit card isn't going to work to get you into the game. You've got to go on here and download an app called hometowntickets.com. You've got to put in all your information, which they can sell, by the way. There's nothing in there, no disclaimer saying they can't, and your credit card information. And then you, you buy your tickets and they go over to Wallet, and then you can bring them up in Wallet and get it scanned to go into a PIAA playoff game. Now, how many senior citizens did we just disenfranchise there that can't do all that crap? And I'm probably one of them. It's the most popular bill I've ever run out of a committee. And I'm going to finish in 10 seconds, I promise, Mr. Mayor. It came out of committee unanimously and everybody, even the audience that was in the room applauded when it came out of committee. But, and it's been on radio stations, TV stations. I've done interviews left and right on this bill to change this. Okay? I went to the leader, who's a friend of mine, Matt, is a Democrat. He runs the House because they're in the majority. He directed me to Anna, who is his legislative assistant. She decides what bills get put up for a vote, not him. That's not the way it works on our side of the aisle. But I said, Anna, can you please run this? And by the way, number two on the list is the chairman, the Democrat chairman of the committee that ran it out for me, and he's in favor of it. And her answer was, I've already upset Andy three times this year. I'm not about to do it again. Who's Andy? Andy Goodman is lobbyist that represents the PIAA. So the lobbyist is controlling how you get into the games to see your kids and grandkids play. That is sinful. And that's why, because I'm going to find somebody that's going to get denied and I'll take them to one of these games where they only accept credit cards or a PIAA playoff game. And I swear, I'm going to spend my own money to file the lawsuit to take it to Pennsylvania court to have it so that they can't deny cash anymore. That being said, thank you.
All right. So, so I, so I just want to comment here, Dan, we got to work on your white shirt things because I'm wearing a white shirt and I like spreadsheets.
Different connotation. Different connotation.
I want to thank Senator and Representative Mau for attending. I think Mayor Harris has.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, brother.
So one last thing I want to leave you with here is Adams County was always a mouthpiece in the state for legislation. For many years, Mayor Harris, Ben Thomas, many others, served on legislative committees, came up with legislative ideas, got with our representatives and our senator, and we made things happen at state level. We don't have that anymore. And we need to get that back. We need to start the legislative committee back up in this organization. And we need to get people who are passionate about making change at the state level. Because if we don't do it, as we're seeing, Pittsburgh and Philly will do it, Harrisburg will do it. Who's defending our rights? Who's defending our outlook? So let's make sure that if it's not you, somebody on your board, on your council can come forward and work with this organization to get the legislative committee back going. And with that, I turn it back over to Mayor Harris.
Thank you, Brian. This will have a nice spot on my wall.